May 16th, Fridley Public Schools School Board Meeting. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, and now I would ask for motion to approve the agenda.
Motion to approve, second.
It's been a motion by Proito, seconded by Delvo, to approve the agenda for May 16th, 2017. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And the motion passes. Now we move on to Spotlight on Recognition.
Tonight, it's my pleasure to introduce the Employee of the Month for May 2017, and that employee is, drumroll please, Cindy Richmond, Secretary at Stevenson Elementary, is the Employee of the Month. Ms. Richmond is a completely dedicated employee who has gone the extra mile to support both the students and staff during her 25 years at Stevenson. Cindy has played a large role in making Stevenson a strong, positive school community. At the start of the school day, young students at Stevenson can be seen coming into the office for the sole purpose of greeting Cindy. She puts a smile on the teachers' faces as they come to work each day. Along with her duties, she is always looking at what she can do to make Stevenson better. This is included staying late with students, making meals for staff in need, helping out with special projects. Last summer, she helped with landscaping around the school and worked on a painting project. These are just a couple of the countless examples that she has done for Stevenson. She's always been the forefront of projects that showcase the wonderful things that go on there. She is always there to offer a helping hand in her support to make our school great. Cindy is well-known throughout the community for her kindness, generosity, and positive attitude, says Daryl Vassler, the principal. And I will say that there has been a change in Cindy's life because Cindy applied to be the receptionist at Hayes Elementary, and they have moved her over there. So she and Julie now are partners over there, and we have a lovely young replacement at Stevenson. And so she will get to spread her cheer over on that neck of the woods, too. But she was just hoping for a few days, contract days, that were less in her upcoming years. So congratulations to Cindy, May Employee of the Month.
We're glad her move was internal.
Yes, yep.
Very good.
And then, our next item is the Minnesota History Day Program selected Fridley Middle School as the winner of the Team Teachers of Merit for 2017. And Erin Cuthbert is the teacher that's there getting that representative, along with Goldie. And so that team, which is very special, people have worked really hard, and this is his second year of doing History Day, leading that. So that's pretty special, to be recognized by Minnesota History Day as that. So congratulations to that team. And then, our next item, I think we have Jaiel. Introducing.
Retiree?
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, Jaiel. I was thinking we had the video. I will do the next one. Here are a list, and as we talked about last month, because many of these people have already left us, we have postponed our annual celebration. But here are over 204 years of service, and these are retirees. Becky Beck, a media person from our middle school, retired mid-year. Bob Kerrigan is Special Education, and he works at the high school. He is finishing this school year. Dennis Kraft is also our Director of Buildings and Grounds, and he will, his last day will be June 30th. We have Kay Ferguson, who is a paraprofessional, and she also left mid-year. Our own Karen Jacob, who has been on leave for the last year and a half or two, is officially retiring. Candy Latch, paraprofessional, also has retired mid-year. Sue Redfield is a cook at the high school, and she will leave us at the end of this school year. Laurie Schulzenberg, Special Education Teacher at Stevenson, also left mid-year. Jewel Schwer, who is the Head Custodian at Hayes, left mid-year. Karen Sagner is our Media Specialist, or Media, excuse me, Media Assistant at Hayes, and she will also leave at the end of the school year. And then Linda Wolf, which is the reason why Cindy moved over there. Linda also left, I think, about the end of March. So congratulations to all of these people. They will be missed, and you know, that's a longevity of the 204 years of service. So congratulations to all of those. Sometimes we don't, we recognize them in board meetings as they retire, but we don't always see them all together, so we wanted to do that.
Good. Okay, now we move on to the Superintendent and Staff Reports.
So tonight, we have Toni Kraft at ALL and Community Education.
Good evening, and thanks so much for having us tonight. And I am so happy tonight to have the lead staff with me tonight. So I'll let everyone introduce themselves. Everyone's here, except for Janelle Jensen, our Community Ed Secretary, who is a huge support to all of us, and kind of the face of our department at the Fridley Community Center. So I'm gonna let...
Okay. Tiger Club, that's us. My name is Kristy Sabey, and along with Sally, I coordinate Tiger Club, the childcare program for the school district. I guess this year, our big thing is that we became accredited in our school age world, so now our program is accredited birth through sixth grade, and we're very proud of that. The birth through five has been accredited for five years. We're coming up on our fifth anniversary, but the school age accreditation is a pretty recent achievement, and it took a few shots. Space was a challenge, and some other things were a challenge for us, but a lot of hard work, and thousands and thousands of criteria met, were there, so. And so that means that we're a very high-quality program. And having said that, we provide, we have and offer curriculum, and we implement that throughout our program. But we are that social-emotional piece that Amina mentioned earlier. That's been our focus for a long time, so we're happy to provide informal learning opportunities for the kids. And just to highlight a few, we take them on outings, and we try to do a nice sprinkling of, you know, museums and theaters, and they recently went to the U.S. Bank Stadium for a tour, so real-life experiences. We offer clubs, and themes, and presentations, like, yeah. In the summertime, we have a theme which just lends itself beautifully to providing lots of activities and clubs. This year, it's gonna be all about superheroes, so I can't wait for you to see some of the results with that. And I think that's all I'll highlight. I'll let Sally maybe highlight some of the other things.
Sally Leon, I'm the Assistant Coordinator for the Tiger Club Childcare Program for the district, and I just want to highlight a few things that we're proud of in this last year and then upcoming, and one of that, one of those things would be our partnerships. I feel like that we've really flourished with our partnerships in the last year. We do a Rockin' Nanas program, which is seniors in the community that want to volunteer their time in our infant room to come and rock babies and feed babies and just help out in that space. We have a good relationship with a middle school teacher who brings middle schoolers down to do reading activities, literacy-based activities, with our preschoolers primarily, where they read stories and then do story stretchers and activities afterwards. So that's really great for the middle schoolers and for our preschoolers. And then also, we've had a great relationship with the ALC, where some of their students have come and been volunteers in our Birth to Five program as well, and have turned into great employees, actually, over the years. And we've had some of our brightest and shiniest, actually. So we're really proud of those partnerships. And then also, just in this last year alone, that we've served over 300 children, and in that, about 25% of that is sibling families. So we're serving from birth to, you know, up to sixth grade, so we have families that have two, three, and even four children, where we've got their schoolagers, we've got their preschooler, and maybe now the new baby in the family. And a great thing about that is our big move from the elementaries in our before-and-after-school program. This coming fall, we'll be at one location at the FCC, so we'll be able to serve those families that we have at one location. So one drop-off, one pickup for those families that are, kind of, we have them all with us. So we're really looking forward to that. And then also, that with that move, we're gonna be able to reintroduce our fifth and sixth grade programming, where we'll be able to offer before-and-after-school programming to the fifth and sixth graders, those middle schoolers, that will be just up the hill. So those are some things we're really excited about.
Hello, I'm Renee Sargenfree. I am new to the district, and we've got a lot of, kind of, notes to look at, the things that have grown, although early childhood, I've found out, is so much more than what you can fit into one page. I'm sure you can understand that. So first of all, let's start with our early childhood family education classes. We have multiple offerings for parents to gain more information, to come in there and bridge that information from school to home, to also get their kiddos into the classroom a little bit, and interacting with other peers, and learning from each other, as well as learning through their parents and other parents and their teachers. We also have school readiness preschool classes, and those are at FCC, for the community center. Got a Trifect Three's preschool, which has been a hit, watching those tiny little ones when they're three years old come in and not really know the first thing about group time, to now doing splendid and doing a great job. We also do have a three-day-a-week preschool for three-to-five-year-olds and a five-day-a-week preschool. So we've got a lot of variations that'll fit with the families. Next year, we are actually moving to a three-year-old classroom. We're really excited about this because it really targets that developmental time in their lives. So we're gonna have two sessions, morning and afternoon. Surprisingly, we've already started registrations, and they are filling quickly, so it's very exciting. Four-year-old preschool, obviously went through the biggest change this year, which is our PYP over at Stevenson Elementary School. We increased, we, in September of 2016, we had four classrooms of 20 kids. We quickly realized that we could use another classroom here because we've got a waiting list, and we really wanted to service those families, so we moved up to another additional classroom. Right now, we have 95 students who will graduate into kindergarten from our classrooms with the Voluntary Pre-K Grant and through PYP. Next year, what's really exciting is we're gonna continue that on, hopefully, and we're going to increase it to 120 spots. So we're talking about a lot of kiddos who are gonna be ready for kindergarten, coming in at a time when we're able to give these services at a really, really reasonable cost for families. And of course, we're all at the Fridley Community Center, as Sally had said, which is very exciting. We're gonna be a nice community of little children, and I'm just excited to see what's gonna happen and the different partnerships that we're gonna create through that.
I'm Dan Wolt, and I am the Auditorium Manager for the Fridley District Auditorium, and I am also an Events Coordinator for the, for Community Education. The months from June through December this last year were very stressful and filled with lots of new adventures, but they ultimately resulted in the creation of a beautiful and a very functional new facility in the district auditorium. And it's something that the community of Fridley can be very proud of. Focus was spent on accessibility, safety, comfort, aesthetics, and technology. Lots of thought went to ensuring that the infrastructure was in place for our current technology, but also that it would allow for future changes and easy upgrades to the space. There are very few facilities in the metro area that are better than the Fridley District Auditorium. Since it opened in early December, it's been a very busy facility. Fridley Public Schools has used it for 63 different activities, ranging from meetings, film screenings, concerts, events, and major theatrical productions, as well as the occasional space where a classroom just wants to spread out. In addition to our long-term Sunday Morning Renter of Kingdom Embassy Church, outside groups have rented the space for a total of 18 different events, and we have held free, or we've held four free family movie nights with an average attendance of about 130 people at each event. Due to the remodeling of the auditorium last summer, now I can go to the next screen, Fridley Community here traveled to the Fine Arts Center of Spring Lake Park for their summer productions of Willy Wonka Jr. and the Lady Pirates of Captain Bree. Both productions were very successful, and the hospitality that we received from Spring Lake Park Community Education was extremely supportive and very outstanding. Over the winter, FCT also hosted our fifth winter dinner show production with a performance of The Dining Room. This summer, we are returning to the, our new auditorium for a youth production of Peter Pan Jr., which has a full roster of actors already in place, and the main stage production of Disney's Beauty and the Beast, for which we are having callbacks as I speak right now. Beauty and the Beast has received a $5,000 grant from the Metropolitan Regional Arts Council through their Community Arts Program in support of this production. Tickets for Beauty and the Beast go on sale on June 19th, and I hope to see lots of you there.
Wonderful.
So our Adult Basic Ed program is one I always really like to highlight, because I think it's kind of a hidden gem that a lot of people don't know about, so I really am happy to have the opportunity to talk about it and hope that a lot of people see this and get the information, and hope that you would spread the information as well. It's a program that we sponsor in partnership with Columbia Heights School District, and we're part of Metro North Adult Basic Ed. The exciting part, we are currently and have been for over 10 years located at 4111 Central, and we have really maxed out in that space. There are waiting lists, and as you can see, when you look at how many students were served this past year, and it's an increase of 11% over last year, so they're doing very well, extremely well. But we're, you know, kind of locked in with space. So it was time for our five-year lease to be renewed, so we've done a lot of work to look at other spaces. We're really happy to find a space at 3989 Central, which is the corner, southeast corner of 40th and Central, the Northeast Bank Building. It's a large, multi-story building, very close to the new Columbia Heights Library, which is lovely. It's really important for us to be on a main, a main street, so for bus line and so forth, so we're really excited about that space and are gonna be moving in in July of this year. We're increasing our square footage there and also then have extra space in case we continue to grow. There's extra space in case we want to, you know, move into some increased space after that. So we're excited about that move. In this past year, 73 countries of origin were represented in the students there. The top three countries, Somalia, Ecuador, and the U.S., all the classes there are free. That's the incredible part of, of the classes that happen there. There's English as a second language, GED prep, Workplace Skills, Citizenship, and Basic Skills. I'd invite you, if you're ever interested in going, I'd be happy to go and have a tour with you there, especially once we get to our new space. It's a great place. It's inspirational to see learners upwards of, you know, even 60, 70s, 80-year-olds learning English. It's really incredible, and again, free, so I think a really great resource for parents in our district to know about. So it's an exciting, exciting piece for us.
Is that an operation 12 months a year?
It is. They take a break in June, just a few week break, and they take some breaks during the year, but yes, it does go. And they do have classes, most of the classes are morning, and then they have some evening classes as well. A lot of the students that attend work as well, so they're not all-day-long classes. Majority are either morning or else the evening classes.
Okay, thank you.
Hello, I'm Stephen Keeler. I coordinate adult, youth, aquatics, and facilities for the district. And I just want to give you a little bit of a snapshot of what I've been doing last year and then continuing into this year. One of the things that I'm really excited about in our adult program is our, what I call Streams of Justice, and I think it really fits in line with the district's equity vision. One example of that is that we took a group to, we viewed the Dakota 38 Documentary, which was a documentary about what happened in Mankato when 38 Native Americans were hung in regards to that. And then we also did a trip to the Fort Snelling. Many know that as a base, but it's also a place, the confluence of the Minnesota and Mississippi River is a lot of place where the Dakota creation stories come, come to place. So we just, in having other adults come in and learn more about the Indigenous cultures and things like that, and we've done book discussions on, like, Between the World and Me with Tanahezi Coats, and it's, these are some of our, actually, our best-attended classes. One of the best comments that I got, it was actually at the Dakota 38 Documentary, we actually had several Indigenous Native people come in and attend our class, and the person said to me, "This is the first time in a school setting that I've actually had a story about me lifted up." And it just, it makes me feel so good about what we're doing, that we can continue to raise voices that are often unheard in other settings, so that's a really exciting thing for us. An encore program is our partnership with the City of Fridley. We do, it's for adults transitioning into, or soon-to-be-retired folks, and it's been a really robust program for us. We offer just different events. We go to the Twins game every year. We do things like go to the Chanhas and things like that, and we usually have a waiting list for those programs, so it's, it's really exciting, especially the partnership we have with the City of Fridley Recreation Department. Youth, I'll just touch on that. What, as Dan had mentioned, our youth theater program is something that is busting at the seams. We already have 40 students for that Peter Pan Jr., and then a waiting list of about 10 students, so it's, it's something that we really are excited about. And then our sports camps, in partnership with some of our coaches, they really do put on a lot of great camps for our students, especially in the summertime. Aquatics, this is something that I am really excited about as well. We, we have, often our people that teach our lessons are also people that took our lessons, like, 15 years ago, and also, most of them, I would say 90%, are also on the swim team. So we've got this kind of full-circle development, and then kids that take our lessons go on the swim team, and then later, so it's just, it's really fun to see all the kids, you know, go through and then come back later, and then some of them come and work for Tiger Club, and it's just, it's fun to see that interaction and that community building, and the students love it, too, so. And then, the only one downside to that is that this year, since there's construction at the middle school, we're having to shut down for the summer for swimming, but we will be back and in full force in the fall, and we'll do some more targeted marketing to just make sure, hey, we're still here, we're still around, and we're gonna be back and better than ever, so. And then, facilities, just a few highlights. We have, for long-term rentals, we have about six renters that continue with us each year. That would be our three churches. We have an Arabic academy that rents space from us, and then there's a few others as well. So facilities is very robust for us, and then we have, of course, high community use. For sure, the community center is busy every Saturday, Sunday, and off many times in the evenings, and then high school and middle school are high-use buildings. So it's really fun, because a lot of times, those partnerships forge in different ways, and then we see a lot of volunteerism come out of those rental people as well, because they keep coming back and they see the value in what they get from us, so that is our programs.
So, as you can see, yeah, wow. Again, I am so very, very lucky to work with the staff. It's, they're incredible, and I think are a real gift to our community in terms of all the programs that we offer. Wondering if you guys have questions for any of us?
I have one question.
Yep.
And this is going back to, to the childcare. Do you have to be a Fridley resident in order to participate in childcare?
You do not. You don't have to be a Fridley resident to participate in anything in community yet, so it's open, and there's no difference in fees for resident versus non-resident for any of our programs at all.
Okay.
So, yeah. And this is our brochure that, again, will give detail about all the things we talked about. It's online, it's on our district website, so it's our spring and summer brochure. Anybody else?
You give a great introduction into the school district and the community through the programs, and then I love how it just continues through your whole life, the spectrum of services and, and community connection that are offered through all the programs.
Well, and there's so much more that you didn't even touch on, like, the summer programming, and, I mean, there's so much more that you guys do, so definitely check it out. Yeah, check out our brochure. Again, we had 10 minutes, so it was a quick presentation.
You did a great job.
We appreciate your support.
Thanks to all of you for coming. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay. We will now move on to Jaiel. Volunteer Appreciation Video.
I am pleased to present a video that we showed last week on May 11th during the Volunteer Appreciation Breakfast. So every May, the school district recognizes the volunteer efforts of our community members who come into our buildings and support our students and support our staff in many ways. Some of them are supporters with funding, some of them support our programs, some of them supporters with giving us their time to read with students, to mentor with students, and to just provide overall support as is needed in those buildings. So the schools also do their own recognition of their volunteers. This is just an opportunity for the district to really give a great thank you to these men and women who consistently throughout the year give us their time and their efforts and their funding to make sure that our students continue to be successful. So we got about 100 names that were submitted from all our buildings, all the elementary schools, including Fridley Community Education, that was presented with the Advisory Board, and a gentleman that is here today was also one of the recipients who was recognized that day. So this video was produced by our communication specialist, David Weber, and this time, it has a little twist, because our students get to tell us and share with us how much they value and appreciate our volunteers. Enjoy.
Being a volunteer is important because it really helps people, and sometimes people just need help. They can't do it by themselves.
Ms. Ryan is smart and kind because she helps me understand the book, and she helps me sound out words, and she makes learning fun.
It's someone that helps someone when they're doing something, and they can't do it right now because they're doing something else.
My volunteer helps me learn new things.
When we ever need help, they help us. So if we're stuck on a word and we don't understand it, like, in a book, if you don't know, like, how, someone can help you do it.
Ms. Debbie helps us with the sight words.
People that volunteer are being nice.
They made us a card when they leave, and they give us some cookies we can eat.
I love how Grandma Nancy treats us nicely.
You are a good influence. She teaches me nice stuff.
I like what Ms. Nancy helps me out with math.
She cares about me. She is talented. She is a pretty woman.
She likes to make me laugh, and she likes to see me.
It makes me feel happy when I see her a lot of days. We talk about our feelings and what's going on, like trips and fun activities, and what we need or what we want and stuff.
They, they help us a lot, like, what happens, like, if we have to talk to them about something, he's always there. they're, he's always there for us if we have to, like, get something off our chest. Seeing them really makes me happy. And, you know, it's like, I'm not very much of a social person. And with them, I get to socialize a lot. And they don't judge us.
She will let me talk about my day. And then if I have any problems with a book, like for the words, some of them were in like some Spanish words, and I didn't know how to pronounce the A did. So then she would help me with that.
They are there to guide the students, and they're there to like lead us, to develop us into, you know, future volunteers who will do the same thing for their communities.
Being a person involved in community theater during the summer and during the year at Fridley, volunteers have really been the basis of what makes this program what it is. Without them, we wouldn't be able to have the beautiful sets and the beautiful costumes and have the staff and creative team that push us to become the performance that we have become.
As a football player here for four years, the Booster Club family like really helped us out with lots of things. Like, they, they gave us some, some food to get ready to go for the game. It made us feel hydrated, made us feel great. And also, like, they loved us and cared about us too, especially, especially the parents. Like, they were like crazy great, and we loved them.
I've been part of the community theater for four years now, and the Board of Volunteers have really enriched my experience with theater.
She, I guess like you can say, like, she helped me find like my heart to serve. Like, like, I think initially when I joined Key Club, which is like the club she helps out with, I was really shy about like volunteering. And like, she kind of just like brings out like the best in us, even if like, it's like really awkward. She's just like, she's so uplifting. And I love her attitude.
I'm gonna say thank you again so much, like for everyone, the Booster Club, the Garrett Hard Family, the Championship Club. I really appreciate you guys. You guys have done a lot for, for the team, for parents, for future kids coming up. And I really appreciate you guys so much.
Thank you, Ms. Ryan, for everything.
Thank you for helping us in, in our classroom.
Thank you, volunteers.
Thank you for volunteering.
Thank you, Ms. Nancy.
Thank you, volunteers, for everything you do. You know, you make the community a better place.
Thank you for volunteering.
Thank you, Crazy Mary, for volunteering.
You are helping, Ms. Ryan, thank you.
Thank you for helping me learn.
Thank you for helping me with numbers.
I love Ms. Ryan, thank you.
Thank you.
That was wonderful.
Is that on the website? It will, it is, yeah.
On our YouTube station?
Yeah. Yeah, so David, is that on the website, on the YouTube station? So, there you go.
What a wonderful video.
That was awesome.
Thank you very much.
Good job.
Now on to business action items. The first item would be the resolution accepting gifts. And as a district, we're fortunate each month to receive gifts from our community and different organizations. And as such, we will go forward with the resolution. So whereas School Board Policy 706 establishes guidelines for the acceptance of gifts to the district, and the school board may accept a gift, grant, or device of real or personal property only by the adoption of a resolution approved by two-thirds of its members. Therefore, be it resolved that the School Board of Fridley Public Schools accepts with appreciation the following gifts received by the district. The following persons donated to Hayes Elementary for a total of $256.34. Michael Paquette, Michael Peterson, Deanna Roth, and anonymous donors. The following donated to Fridley High School for a total of $2,000, or $2,065. Amina Amatula, in honor of her daughter, Asia. Shiraki Halli, discount toward CLR binders for teacher training. Kenneth Veikin for the DCD program. The following persons donated to Fridley Middle School for a total of $190.37. Scott O'Leary, Stephanie Sharp, anonymous donors, and the Fridley Women of Today for the FMS Builders Club. The following persons donated to Stevenson Elementary School. Sria Fridley, $10,000 for playground equipment addition. Voits Bus Company for a bus ride to and from the Mall of America for Safety Patrol Appreciation Day. So is there a motion to accept the gifts and thank the donors?
So moved. Second?
It's been a motion by Delvo, seconded by Proito, to accept the gifts and thank the donors for the contributions. Could you please call the roll?
Ms. Delvo? Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
And the resolution passes. Okay.
In your packet is the next resolution, which is a resolution that we have been asked by the Noka County Property Records and Taxation Division in establishing a combined precincts for 2017. This is chain, in the combined precincts, we are moving it from the high school to Fridley Community Center. And for those instances in which we only have one precinct, where all, or only one polling place, all 12 precincts would come to, not the high school any longer, but to the Fridley Community Center. So the resolution is listed here in your packet. And the precincts and polling places for the district elections, are those precincts or parts of the precincts located within the boundaries of the school district. Also pursuant to the statute, the board may establish a combined polling place for several precincts for school elections not held on the day of a statewide county or municipal election. And the combined polling places are hereby established to serve the precinct specified for all school districts, special and general elections not held on the same day as the statewide county or municipal elections. And therefore, it was what I said before, all 12 precincts would come to Fridley Community Center. The polling places would remain open, as is typical, from 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM. The clerk is directed to prepare a map, which is on the adjacent page then, which talks about each of the combined precincts. To post that map, and then also, as required by statute, the clerk is hereby authorized and directed to give written notice of the new public, or new polling places located to all registered voters in the school district. So we ask approval of this resolution.
There are a motion to accept the approval to establish combined precincts.
Motion to approve. Second?
Been a motion by Proito, seconded by Thornton, to accept the approval to establish combined precincts 2017. Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Ms. Delvo? Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
And the resolution passes. Now Matt.
So tonight, we have a resolution before you to withdraw from our TIES membership. According to TIES bylaws, we must provide a written notice of at least one year and adopt a resolution by the board authorizing such withdrawal. So tonight, there is a resolution before you that does exactly that. And we put it for you for your vote.
Your motion?
I move that we withdraw from the TIES consortium.
Second?
It's been a motion by Delvo, seconded by Proito, to approve the TIES consortium discontinuation. Can you please call the roll?
Ms. Delvo? Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
And the resolution passes. One more resolution.
Actually, this is simply a motion.
Oh, motion.
But that is, that is good. We have been asked by the city of Fridley to approve the plans for safe routes to school that is part of the city plan. This affects both of our elementaries, Hayes and Stevenson, and our middle school. The primary reason for this plan is to establish, obviously, safe routes to school. The plan for each of the sites has about 10 or 11 different components, many of which are the responsibility of the city and/or county, depending upon which road they're on. And a few have to do with the school district, primarily the parking and entrance into the school. We are dealing with some of them this summer already with the parking lot changes that are happening at Stevenson Elementary. So all of the pieces that are in this plan are pieces that we have in our plan as well. Many of the things are to reduce speedy, speed, you know, places that we would rather have safer place for students to be able to walk to school, bicycle racks that might come into place at our elementaries in particular. One of those pieces was already installed at our middle school. There's a new, beautiful new bicycle rack that's just on the south side of the middle school. That's part of a previous plan that was there as well. There are missing sidewalks throughout the city that prevent kids from having safe routes to school. So that's a piece of it as well. So we ask for your approval that they could send this on to the people that they need to send it on, so that they understand that the school district has been a part of this, and our principals have been involved in surveys. And their input was a part of this plan as well.
Okay, is there a motion?
I'm moved. Second?
It's been a motion by Delvo, seconded by Proito, to approve the Safe Routes to School City Plan. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? And the motion passes. Next is our consent agenda. And this includes routine action items, such as minutes of the regular school board meeting and work session held on April 18th, 2017, monthly financial reports, new contracts, amendments, leaves of absence, terminations, resignations, and retirements, insurance for married spouses, memo of understandings, adult basic education lease, approval of 2017-18 school year calendar changes. And this is for the conference dates only for Stevenson Elementary, 2017-18 bus stop approval, and 2017-18 student parent handbook. Is there a motion?
I move to approve the consent agenda. Second?
It's been a motion by Delvo, seconded by Thornton, to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? And the motion passes. Next, we have written information.
Again, as is our, our normal piece, we have May 1st student enrollment pieces in there. You will see by that that we have held a very strong enrollment that has not been typical in the years past. It has tapered off more significantly than we have seen this year. And primarily, we have seen that drop at the high school in the past. So that has stayed very strong this year. That said, we did have in our work session a presentation by Hazel Reinhardt on our enrollment projections. And you, you know that we spend a lot of time thinking about that, because as we bring the budget to you next month, enrollment is a critical piece on making sure that we have the funds and that we're using our funds appropriately for the number of students that we have here. So that's what we have. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I will move on to the reports from school board members. Schools for Equity and Education meeting held on April 21st. Carol?
Yes, I was able to attend that meeting. It was nice, I must say, with the current administration. It's a lot of unknowns of what direction things are gonna be going. But what I learned, you know, just, a lot of programs are being affected by, you know, after-school programs. I mean, it's just so many what-ifs right now with the current Secretary of Education and just a lot of, you know, with government shutdowns. It's just like, okay, and you know, just a lot of questions and concerns about what's gonna happen in the school district. So, yeah. Looking forward to the next one coming up here in a couple of weeks to see more and more.
Right, well, thank you. And the Northeast Metro 916 Board Meeting held on May 3rd. I attended that. Few of the things we talked about, a big item was, we reviewed the safety committee recommendations. And the safety committee for Northeast Metro, it's comprised of education assistants, which in our district, we call paraprofessionals, teachers, related services staff, and administrators. And because of the population in many of the sites throughout Northeast Metro, there's a bigger, higher incidence of potential for injuries to the staff and the students. And so they spent about the last year examining data and exploring how the district could create safer environments for students and staff. And they, they came up with some very good recommendations that will be implemented in the district. And then we spent some time discussing the upcoming events. And there will be several graduation ceremonies. The 916 Education Foundation will have their annual golf fundraiser. And then an upcoming event, it's called Top Secret Project. And Laura Seifert just briefly discussed this at our District Wellness Committee meeting last Friday. But the Top Secret Project, it's a Hazelden Betty Ford Foundation program. And it will be hosted at the Eastview Academy on May 23rd. And it, what it is, it helps parents recognize unfamiliar hazards in a teenager's bedroom. And it's an interactive exhibit. It includes hundreds of items that, once seen through an educated lens, could signify that there is a problem. So that was really interesting, and I plan on attending that and learning more. So that's that. Important future school board dates. The Northwest Suburban Integration School District Joint Powers Board Meeting will be May 17th, tomorrow evening, 6:15 PM at their offices. Schools for Equity and Education will be held May 25th, 9:00 AM at the Ramada Plaza, Minneapolis. AMSD Board Meeting, May 26th, 7:00 AM at the Ties Conference Center. The next school board workshop will be held May 30th, 6:00 PM at the Fridley High School. Northeast Metro 916 Board Meeting will be June 7th at Bel Air School at 6:00 PM. Fridley Public Schools Board Meeting will be held June 20th, the work session, 5:30 PM, City Hall, Conference Room A. Open forum at 7:00 PM, City Hall, Conference Room A. And then followed by the business meeting, 7:30 PM in the City Council chambers. I'll now ask for a motion for adjournment.
I move to adjourn.
Second? It's been a motion by Delvo, seconded by Thornton, to adjourn at 8:22 PM. All those in favor? Aye? Opposed? We are adjourned. Thank you.